Before I start the meeting, I would like to say that we expect the audience to be respectful and also the board members to be respectful. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. I would like to call the meeting of the Little Miami School Board, November 18th, 2025, at 6:30 to order. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Grace?
Here.
Mrs. Horvath?
Here.
Mrs. Elmer?
Here.
Mr. Seibert?
Here.
Mr. Wallace?
Here.
Would you please join our junior ROTC and the board and the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Each month, the Little Miami Board of Education takes time to celebrate outstanding individuals who make our district such a special place. These students, staff, and community members exemplify leadership, character, and Panther pride in all they do. Tonight, we're proud to recognize this month's honorees who truly show what it means to be a Panther. First, we'd like to start with our Panther Character Award. Mr. Wallace does the Character Awards.
Good evening. We would like to recognize five deserving students for this month's Panther Character Award winners. This honor is presented to one student from each of our schools. The students are recognized by their teachers and peers for their hard work and good character, and this month's character trait is trust, putting your confidence in someone you can depend on. We would ask that the following students come up here and line up in the front of the board when I call your name, facing the audience. Lena Dalton.
Right here. Okay, turn around.
The next one is Nolan Jackson. Emerson Rader. Reese Dubinsky. Skylar Hawke. I want to read a brief note about each student. So Lena Dalton. Lena is a kind and hard-working kindergarten student. She demonstrates great listening skills and is always following directions. I can always trust that she is doing the right thing, setting a wonderful example, and working hard. Excellent job. Nolan Jackson, this is from a classmate. I nominate my trustworthy award to Nolan Jackson because he always keeps his promises and he pays attention and never lies. Therefore, Nolan is trustworthy. That's a pretty good reputation when you have your classmates saying that. Congratulations there. Emerson Rader is trustworthy. She has been a science aide for the past few years, and I can count on her to help me set up the labs even when she is busy and has always done right. So it's awesome that they can actually, you know, they can trust you, and that's a big responsibility you have, setting it up and helping the teacher, so. Reese Dubinsky. Reese works very hard in her classes every day. She puts so much time into everything she does, and it pays off for her. She is a student who always has her work done. One day this week, she told me that she accidentally left her workbook on the kitchen counter. They had her homework in it. I completely trusted her that it was done, and it was. When you do the right thing all the time, you can be trusted when it isn't visible. Reese is an awesome kid who we are very happy to have on our team. That was a great write-up there by the teacher. Excellent. Skylar Hawke. Skylar shows the character trait of trust. She believes in others, she is trustworthy with her friends and teachers, and is honest so that others can trust her too. Each day, Skylar comes to school with a smile on her face, ready to learn and be a good friend and classmate to all. It truly amazes me that someone so young can be such a role model to so many people that are around her, young and old. Skylar, you are an amazing girl. So at this time, I'd like to congratulate all of you for such a great example, a great character, and this is why Little Miami is a wonderful school. Good job, guys. Congratulations.
This is exciting, isn't it? Tonight, we're proud to celebrate a special group of Little Miami educators who are responsible for the ECC earning a Gold Level recognition from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce for exceptional implementation of the Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports Framework. That's a mouthful, isn't it? The Gold Level is the highest school-level distinction and signifies a school that demonstrates a sustained, comprehensive, and data-driven approach to positive behavior support at all three tiers. Please come up when I call your name. Lindsay Eckstein. Brittany Stoltz. Louise Dawson. Melissa, I'm currently going to mess up your last name. How do we say that?
It's Rassikot.
Okay, Rassikot, because it certainly doesn't look that way. Carla Hemolright. And Heather Milligan. Now, I'd like Heather to come share a little bit about this group and the award that they received.
Thank you. So the Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports, or PBIS, recognition system in Ohio is a way that the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce celebrates and acknowledges school districts that implement PBIS with high fidelity. Our Early Childhood Center received the Gold Distinction for last year, which is the highest honor that the state has. PBIS is a three-tier systematic framework that focuses on teaching, reinforcing, and supporting positive behavior school-wide. Schools and districts must show consistent implementation, use of data, collaboration, and communication of behavior supports in all three tiers to qualify for this recognition. Our building administrators oversee all three tiers of PBIS. They hold monthly meetings focused on each area. At the ECC, Lindsay Eckstein, the principal, and this year, Patrick Clark, assistant principal, are leaders in this, in their building. Tier one at the ECC is grounded in our PACS program, and our leaders of tier one are our school counselor, Brittany Stoltz, and our tier-one PACS coach, Louise Dawson, which wasn't able to be here this evening. Tier two at the ECC involves our check-in-checkout system, which is an intervention to positively reinforce and provide feedback to students with increased frequency. These students that also need additional direct instruction and skills, we offer what's called a SAG group, Social Academic Intervention Groups. Tier two is led by our counselor, Brittany Stoltz, and our mental health consultants, which this year is Angie Brown. Tier three is focused on students that need individualized supports in order to engage in positive behaviors and reinforce the learning of these students and those around them. For these intentional plans, we have what's called BCBA's, Board Certified Behavior Analysts, and BI's, Behavior Interventionists, to support our teams of teachers. So at the ECC, Carla Hemolright is our BCBA, and Melissa Rassikot is the BI to lead tier three. So Ohio recognizes schools for PBIS at three levels, bronze, silver, and gold. Gold is the top school-wide distinction and requires all three tiers to be implemented with fidelity while also meeting state data requirements. This is such a distinguished achievement. For perspective, in 2023-2024 school year, 604 schools and districts received recognition. Only 48 received gold. So in summary, our ECC was awarded the Gold Level Recognition by the Ohio State Education and Workforce as being a school with sustained, comprehensive, and data-driven implementation of PBIS at all tiers, and this was on their first attempt of even being recognized.
All right. Lindsay, would you like to come up and share a few words?
I'm very excited to do that. All right. My font, I did not make this big enough, so we're going to do the best we can here in my, in my 40s. And, okay, there we go. All right. I'll bring it back down. It is my pleasure to say a few words about Heather Milligan. Heather's work is the kind that quietly but powerfully transforms a system. In her role, she has implemented structures and supports that elevate the way we serve students and staff every single day. Whether she is partnering with teachers to support an individual learner or creating district-wide processes that keep us aligned and consistent, Heather's approach, she approaches every challenge with clarity, purpose, and she always keeps student success as her goal. At LMCC specifically, Heather's impact has been truly extraordinary. Her belief in our staff, in our PBIS program, and in our ability to implement it with fidelity has been unwavering. She has walked alongside us as we continually reflected on our practices, listened to feedback of stakeholders, and made adjustments that strengthened our systems. Heather's use of data to advocate for the needs of our building has been integral to our success. In fact, we could not have earned our PBIS award without her guidance, her support, and her thoughtful leadership. She has been both a champion of our work and a partner in our growth. Heather, on behalf of LMCC, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your mentorship, your support, and your dedication to our students, families, staff, myself personally, as in the leadership role. We are so grateful for all you do for our Panther Cups.
Well, thank you. And let's give them another round of applause. All right. We want to congratulate our Panther Character and Pride Award winners, and now we would like all our award winners to head to the lobby for pictures. Thank you. All right. Again, we always read the mission statement. The board believes that it is the responsibility of the school system to ensure that each graduate is college and career-ready. To these ends, the environment, an environment of high expectations and opportunity shall be created that fosters scholarship and citizenship and develops within each student the ability to become a protective and responsible member of society. Thank you. All right. I need a motion to adopt the amended agenda, please.
So moved.
Mr. Seibert?
I'll second.
Ms. Horvath? Any discussion?
Yes. I would like to remove the exempted contracts from the personnel on this agenda.
Do I have a first?
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Do we have to have a roll call?
Okay, then we have a discussion?
Yeah, we have a discussion prior to.
Discussion now?
Yeah, we can.
All right.
So the question I have then, and I assume to Bobby or maybe Regina, why now are we putting these contracts up for renewal and not March like every other year?
I think, didn't you discuss that with Mrs. Morgan?
Uh, I, no, I don't think I got a good answer. So why, why is that?
So when we have changes, this has been done in the past a couple of times as well. When we have big changes on, on boards, superintendents, sometimes people are anxious about whether their contracts will be, will be approved. With hiring season coming up in February, we have great employees, and I think that it is a positive for the board to show that they are secure in their position, that they are wanted back the following year. This doesn't give them any more money, time, anything else. All it does is say, hey, you're doing a great job at Little Miami, and we want you to come back next year.
Is there any, is there something in any of these individual employees' past evaluations or performance reviews that would cause us not to have them be renewed in March?
No.
So if not, why now? Why are these people, all of whom hold administrative positions, why now? Why, why not our teachers? Why not our bus drivers? Why not our custodians? Why are we choosing administrator only?
Uh, our administrators are not protected by, by a, a union agreement. So if at the end of March, after hiring season has already started and, and some of it completed, and we decided as a board that we didn't want them back, then they have lost the opportunity to, to be at the beginning of a hiring season. So it is, it is not.
I think it's showing that we.
That we respect them.
Yes, I agree.
And what about the, what about the other employees? Our schoolteachers, our bus drivers, our custodians?
They're under a union. They're under a union agreement.
Do we not, do we not respect them?
Absolutely, we do. But they have a little bit more protection because they have a union agreement that, that is applied to how we can go about their reemployment. Whereas an exempt personnel, they do not have that same protection. And so it just is a little more crucial for them to, to understand that they are wanted back in our district. They do a great job every day, and the last thing that they want is for them to dust off their resume and leave because they're unsure of their future.
Yeah, this, this.
This has been past practice.
No, it hasn't.
Yes, it has.
Last election, it was not.
I've been on this board for 28 years.
Correct.
It has been past practice.
And I'm telling you, last election, it was not.
The last time that it was done was when there was a superintendent change, and because of the unknown with the superintendent change, just like an unknown with a board change, there was a, an early contract decision made.
Because I'll tell you, this wreaks a favoritism. This really wreaks a favoritism. And I'll tell you.
Keep this professional, please.
Yes. Mrs. Grace, this wreaks a favoritism. Any Little Miami employee watching tonight, wondering what makes these people special to have early contract renewals but not their own, deserves to feel slighted and upset. Little Miami should be not, should not be doing business this way. This is board-approved. These contracts tonight, they are telling all the employees and the community that they do not have faith in the current, in the, in the board upcoming. This is absolutely shameful, that again, favoritism is being shown.
So the reason I would say that it is not favoritism is everybody who is up for a new contract in, at the end of this school year is on this list. So we did not pick and choose. We went through and, and, and placed everybody on that, that contract.
You don't have to convince me. It's the community that I think that needs to be convinced, Mrs. Morgan, because as I said, any Little Miami employee watching tonight that is not getting their contract renewed should feel slighted. Again, that goes to our teachers, that goes to our bus drivers, that goes to our custodians. And I want to ask.
And they have a union contract.
And I'm going to ask Diane that if you could allow the incoming board to do business as we usually do in March, that you'll be a part, and these two people that got elected, give them the opportunity to build trust. Thank you.
That's my question. If the election outcome were different, would we be moving forward with these contracts?
I would think that, I, I don't know that because it wasn't different. I was, through the conversations after the election, it was asked to put these on. And so I, I, I can assume, but I can't tell you for sure.
So I, I have struggled with this one quite a bit because I see both sides of the equation. I completely understand, these are really good people, really good staff members that I would never want to lose. And I understand if you've got as big of a turnover as we are going to have, and you have people coming in, they don't know them, they don't necessarily know their track record, and so it makes you feel more, more vulnerable because you have people that don't know what you've contributed to the district yet. It's not their fault, they're just coming in. So I totally get that. And these are people that I want back in the district. They're making a big difference in important ways, and I would not want to jeopardize that myself. On the other hand, I'm not sure that it requires changing what, it's not to say that it's never been done before, but it's, it's not that common of a practice, and I'm not sure that it warrants changing when we would normally renew their contract. And like I said, I have struggled with this for the reason that I stated originally, which is I don't want to lose these people either, but I also am not sure it warrants changing up what we've normally done.
Anybody else like to say?
Yeah, I'll say a few things about this. I think over the last couple of years, we've had some environments that were not very friendly to our students, faculty, and staff, and I don't blame them to want to know some security about the future.
Well, I can say that regardless of which direction we take, I will be singing your praises now and at the time that, if we were to do it at the normal time, I'll be singing your praises then and talking to the people coming in and letting them know who you are and why you should remain. So you can be assured that we, who do know your background, will be sharing that.
We do have teachers in the audience. Would you like to hear if this is offensive to them? I mean, you, you said that it would be offensive to our, to our staff members if we did this. We do have teachers that we can ask.
No, no, we'll say that for public comments. If they want to talk during public comment, okay?
I was just making.
And I, and I certainly appreciate that, but we're not going to, well, I guess we'll go bring to a vote.
All right. Call of vote.
Whether to amend it or not, so this would be formended.
Oh, that's right.
You have to do that before.
All right. I need a roll call to see if we amend the agenda.
Okay, Mrs. Grace?
No.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
No.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
So the, the agenda is amended. All right, so now we need.
And now we need a roll call with the original first and seconds from Mr. Seibert, Mrs. Horvath, for the agenda itself.
All right.
As amended.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
No. All right. I need a motion to accept the reading of the minutes.
So moved.
Mr. Wallace?
I'll second.
Ms. Horvath? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
No, you were not here last time. So can you, you have to abstain.
That's right.
Abstain.
I'm sorry. Abstain. Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Thank you.
Communications and/or visitors to the board, superintendent's comments.
Yes, I would like to begin tonight by congratulating Brad Underwood. He is not here tonight because he is receiving the Friend of 4H Award. His efforts in promoting our students who participate in the Warren County Fair have been noticed by many schools and the Warren County Fair Extension Office as well. Each summer, Brad spends hours at the fair celebrating students in 4H. He tells their stories, showcases their accomplishments, and makes sure that our community sees their hard work and the pride that they take in their projects. I see Brad doing this every day, all year, for our students and staff here at Little Miami. Usually, he's behind the scenes, and we're lucky to have him here, and I'm so glad that he's the one that's being celebrated tonight.
That's, congratulations to Brad. That's awesome.
Congratulations to Brad, absolutely. Um, next, I just have a quick update on our town hall. Our meeting was last Thursday, November 13th. We had 24 people participate last, last Thursday, and they did a great job discussing the topics and sharing their perspectives. Our next town hall is December 2nd. Because our third and fourth town halls are so close together that we will combine, and I'll give you a report in January of those.
That's great, thank you.
The last thing that I want to give you a report on tonight is our fall athletic update. Fall sports performed their overall best since joining the ECC. I'm very proud of that. We are ranked fifth out of the 10 teams in ECC All-Sport standings after the fall season. Both boys and girls soccer won the district championship. Both were first in school history. Girls soccer was also named ECC Champions, and Coach Dan Marquitos was named ECC Coach of the Year. Boys cross country won the ECC for the second year in a row. Coach Jim Brant was named ECC Coach of the Year. Both girls and boys cross country qualified as a state, or I'm sorry, as a team for the state meet, where Ryan placed third overall and Anne placed seventh overall. Girls golfer Lauren qualified for the state tournament. She is the first Panther to do so in school history. Under the new head coach, Nate Mahan, football had the most league wins since joining the ECC. Volleyball, girls tennis, and boys golf all had respectable seasons, and overall, Little Miami Athletics is on the rise, and we're all excited to continue to watch. That is all I have.
Good stuff. I'd like to make a comment on that. I remember when we went from the other league to this league, and everybody shook their head and said, we will never win anything, and look at what we're doing. It's awesome.
I agree.
All right. Moving on. Public comment on agenda items. No one signed up. Thank you. Treasurers' reports and financials.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
We, I think we just offered people to, to speak, and I think we have people who want to speak.
Sorry.
My name is Brooke Dotteri. I am a second-grade teacher at Little Miami, and I cannot speak on behalf of all the teachers, or custodians, or bus drivers, or anyone else under contracts. However, I think we would be foolish to not rehire our leadership. You can see the growth and the strength that our schools have. You can see the growth and the strength that our schools have made, especially since the levies. My own children went to school here, and when we started, my son was in kindergarten, and did not have specials, and did not get all the extras, as people like to say. So, I just think that you should consider retaining what you have. If you have reasonable doubts, then obviously, that should be discussed in private meetings, but I think it would be silly to let your administrators be on edge, wondering whether or not they're going to have a job, because they will go elsewhere. There's always schools that will pay more, and offer that job up in an instant, and that's the same way with all public employees. So, you should keep what you have, and be appreciative of what you have, and that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, moving on, and thank you. Treasurers' reports and financial reports. Mr. Gonda?
As for the board's approval under item D, number one, on the contracts as listed, please.
So moved.
Mr. Wallace? I'll second. Discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to go through them real quick here. The first one's with Centos, actually says $260,000 yearly, but that's just actually our purchase order amount, that's what we budgeted out for them. The varies for different things, that's for our supplies and uniforms, and this keeps us at the state term pricing. So, we was going to prove that, it's a 36-month contract. The next two are with the Warren County ESC. The first one is for Special Education Services for their wellness center, and the one below it is also the Warren County ESC, and it is for, excuse me, Intervention Specialist Speech Services. And the next, we have a contract with Gail Crombie. That's a not-to-exceed amount of $34.20, and that's for EMIS data support. She was our EMIS secretary before at the high school, and is going to be helping out with that a little bit. And then, we also have the last one here with Gina Sheldon, and that is for vocal coaching services, I can't speak tonight, at the high school.
I have a question on the ESC contracts. Have they gone up?
Yes.
Considerably, or?
They, I don't know whether you consider it considerable, but they always go up a little bit. It just reflects the job market that's out there, because I believe they'd be paying more for OTs, PTs, psychs, and so on. And of course, it's passed on to us. So, yeah, it has gone up over the years, but our services have also increased in addition.
That's true. All right, thank you.
Really quick, for that speech intervention specialist, I'm assuming that's part-time?
Um, yeah, it's just so many days, I think, remaining in the, for the rest of the year. Yeah, it would be a lot more if it was every day. Correct.
All right, any other questions? We need a roll call?
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, as for the board's approval of the donation as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Seibert, Mr. Wallace. That was very nice.
Yes, we received a donation of six $50 Kroger gift cards for families in need from Catherine, I don't know if I'm pronouncing this right, is it Maru, Moro, Moro, M-O-R, or E-A-U? I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing it correctly. Does anybody know it?
No, but thank you.
But thank you, that is awesome. I mean, that's $300, that's fantastic.
We need a roll call, please.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Thank you. And that's all I have, thank you.
All right, under superintendent's reports and recommendations.
Yes, I ask for the board's approval of all items under personnel.
So moved.
Mr. Seibert?
Second.
Mr. Wallace? Any discussion?
Yes, you'll notice that Eileen Frederick is retiring on August 1st of 26th, after 33 years at Little Miami. She was hired at the August 25th, 1992 board meeting. Eileen teaches third grade and is loved by so very many. I spoke with a parent earlier this year, who was thrilled that her daughter was getting to experience Mrs. Frederick before her retirement. We wish Eileen the best in retirement, and she will certainly be missed.
Yep, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Thank you, I ask for the board's approval of open enrollment as attached.
Need a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Horvath, Mr. Wallace. Discussion?
Yes, these students are open to enroll due to senior privilege or following a parent guardian.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Thank you, I ask for the board's approval of the band field trip as attached.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Mr. Seibert?
I'll second.
Mrs. Horvath? Discussion?
Yes, our marching band would like to travel to Walt Disney World in Orlando to the Magic Kingdom Parade, which they'll be a part of in front of thousands of people. The trip is over spring break.
It's pretty awesome. I went when my daughter was in band, and the trip for them was fun, the chaperones didn't have quite as much fun. So, that's pretty good. All right.
They're picking a, a warm month, though, it's not August, so it's not too bad, hopefully, the weather. It'll hopefully cooperate with them.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Thank you, I ask for the board's approval of the girls' basketball field trip as attached.
So moved.
Second.
Seibert, Mr. Wallace. Discussion?
Yes, last year, our girls' basketball team wanted to go to the Hoosier Gym in Kingston, Indiana, to play a basketball game, and they were snowed out, and they are seeking approval again this year. The game is on Saturday, January 17th.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Thank you, next I ask for the board's approval of the girls' bowling field trip as attached.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
All right, Mr. Seibert, Mr. Wallace. Discussion?
Yes, we have one member of the girls' bowling team seeking approval to travel to Indianapolis, Indiana, to compete in the Bowling Indy Youth Series, which is a bowling college showcase. The trip is Sunday, November 30th.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Thank you, I ask for the board's approval for the Little Miami Gifted Identification and Service Plan.
So moved.
Mr. Seibert?
I'll second.
We got a tie.
Elmer? Discussion?
Yes, this plan identifies how students are identified as gifted, and how our gifted students are served. The board approval is needed per the state.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Thank you, I ask for the board's approval for the disposal of school buses as attached.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Mr. Seibert?
I'll second.
Mrs. Elmer? Discussion?
Yes, these are the last of the 2007 buses that were purchased with the May 2006 bond dollars. The miles range on these buses from 275,692 miles to 337,462 miles. So, you can see that our bus drivers and mechanics take great care of our buses. Prior to disposal, remove all of the good and usable parts for future use. We have compared two companies concerning the disposal of our buses, it's Phipps and Cohen. Both companies are very similar in pricing. One of the companies does charge us a towing fee and a fluid disposal fee, and so we utilize the other company, it gives us just a little bit more. We'll receive about $450 per bus.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
That is all I have.
All right, now for the Warren County Career Center report. Butler County-based Miami University is reaching out to partner with Warren County Career Center School System as it expands its high school nursing career training program. So, not only will they be in high school and learning how to be a nurse, but they also will get credit, so that's, that's pretty awesome. Also, our cosmetology has been meeting with the different owners of beauty shops, just to see what is out there. Also, our construction trades have been making add-around chairs, they look really cool. I also have a, a report on my phone. Students from Early Childhood Education and Cybersecurity Labs recently completed meet and greet sessions with local business partners. Students had the chance to meet with potential employees about, about their companies, and to talk about skills and experience that they needed. A represent, a representative from one of the cybersecurity companies who met with these kids is also a 1977 Warren County Career Center graduate, which I think is pretty cool. Students have, have started preparation for local and regional competitions for their career tech organizations. A lot of times, our students compete against all other career centers, and we've had kids go to state, and we've also had kids go to national. So, our Little Miami kids are in competition also with all the rest of them, so we're very proud of them, and that's all I have. And, I don't think we have any board reports, do we? All right, next board meeting date is December the 9th, that's a special meeting, and then our regular meeting will be December the 16th. And, do we have any public comment?
I'd like to suggest we move that December meeting up to 6 o'clock. We've all got things to do in the month of December, families, parties, whatever. So, instead of 6:30, 6 o'clock.
Anybody have a problem with that?
I'm okay with that.
I'm all right. All right, so it'll be 6 o'clock on the 16th.
On the 9th, right? Or you're talking about the 16th?
We're talking about the 9th.
There's a 9th and a 16th.
We're talking, he wants, he's talking about the 16th.
I'm suggesting the 16th, but if you want to go up a half hour on the 9th, that's okay, too.
I'll second that.
All right, so 6 o'clock on both?
Mm-hmm.
All right, we got it. Now, public comment on non-agenda items.
Good evening, Sharks. I am asking for funding, is this on? I was making a joke, but I don't, I don't know that it's on. How do I? Is it on?
It should be.
Don't start my timer yet, Terry, I can't.
Sorry, that was one of the funniest things I've heard.
Can you, is it on? Okay, maybe just not close. Okay, I, I am now beginning my actual comments. So, it is November, and we have Thanksgiving next week, and so I just wanted to publicly thank some of the folks who work for the school district, for whom I'm, I'm especially grateful. I am very grateful for Erin Lynch, who is my son's math teacher at the elementary. She makes math very fun. She is also his homeroom teacher, and she and I have spoken about some of his needs, and she's always very responsive, and I appreciate her. I'm thankful for Michelle Florence, who is my son's science teacher. She makes learning really fun, like if you think of Ms. Frizzle from the Magic School Bus, she does really cool experiments, like every week, and, and he's learning so much, and he's never been as excited about a school project as he has been for Ms. Florence. I also want to be thankful and express thanks for Ms. Emily Lozano. It is her first year of teaching this year, she's my son's language arts teacher at the elementary, and I think it's like such a blessing that someone like her chose Little Miami to be where she started her career, because she is such a lovely person, and really cares for her students, and I'm, I'm very grateful for her. I want to express thanks for Diane Schroeder, who is one of my daughter's third grade teacher. Ms. Schroeder makes learning very fun. It's, you know, children's first experience in gifted in third grade, and I think she does a really nice job of transitioning them, because it can be a difficult time for kids who are used to being the shining star of their classroom, and now they're just part of a constellation, and it takes some adjustment. I'd also like to express thanks for Mrs. Seneca Taylor, who is my other daughter's third grade teacher. She has such a special way with kids who have needs outside of their academic needs, and gifted children often need a lot of support in executive functioning and emotional regulation because of their asynchronous brain development. And so, she has done just a really nice job with that. I know that all the specials teachers at all of the schools are amazing, but Kelly McKinley, who is the music teacher at the primary, put on a beautiful concert in November, and they really enjoyed it. My children have left the Early Childhood Center, but there are some teachers there that still stay, will stay in my heart, I think, for the rest of my children's lives. I'd especially like to thank Julia Wimmel, Pam Jordan, Lisa Walker, Kendra Jones, and Taylor Rohr, who are all teachers in the green hallway at the Early Childhood Center. And I would also like to thank Brittany Stoltz, who is the school counselor who is honored tonight as a part of the PBIS. Her contributions to one of my children's educational plan have changed her academic life forever. I also want to thank all of the PTOs at all of the schools, especially the Early Childhood for their trunk-or-treat program, at the primary for the movie night they did earlier this year, at the elementary for their support for the kindness cups, and the PBIS store, and at the middle and high school for all the things they do to support teachers with meals and little pick-me-ups. And then finally, at the district level, I really want to thank Regina, who always responds anytime that I ask her for any information, for Jen Horvath, who picked an excellent language arts curriculum and helped shepherd that, and for Jamie Miles, who does a wonderful job getting professional development for all of the folks who work with her and underneath her. Thank you.
Thank you, it's so nice to hear nice things. Teachers, a lot of times, that's the only thing they really want, is to hear a thank you, or good job, so thank you.
Good evening, I'm Mike Vioxx. I had an issue back in October about signing up for my child's field trip. I talked to multiple board members. I passed the background check, which I have no problem taking. I got multiple answers on different things, and I would like clarification of what you need a background check for. Do you have to have a background check to do popcorn Fridays? Or any events at the school? Or is it just field trips? Why isn't it both?
I can, I can answer that, if that's okay. What are procedures for background checks? If you're going to be left alone with a child, you have to have a background check. If you are in the supervision of a teacher or another staff member, kind of in a group setting, then you don't have to have a background check. So, let's say that you will want to be a mystery reader. You don't have to have a background check to come in and be a mystery reader. You're not left alone with a student. But on a field trip, when you have a group of students that can be assigned to you as you are the chaperone, you have to have a background check because you're alone with those children.
I would like to see that policy changed because I've seen stories of people going into these schools. I mean, who's to say a parent that goes into the school doesn't have a bad background check? Whether they're with a teacher or not, they don't need to be in the school. So I'd like to see that policy changed. Also, I've been told that the board members, by law, don't have to have a background check. I'd like to see that change and be an example for other schools because I've seen stories that board members have backgrounds that don't come back clean. You guys should have to have background checks as well. You're dealing with our kids. We don't, I don't know you guys from Adam. Who's to say you don't have something in your background that could be a bad thing? I'm not saying you guys do. I mean, from what I've talked to you guys, you've all seemed pretty straightforward, but it would be nice to know that you guys have all passed background checks and set that up, you know. I'd like to see it in the state and be a law because you guys have just as much say in our kids' lives than we do. And we should know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vanessa S.
Vanessa Shrekentham, Villages A Classically, have a fourth grader. Little Miami is a 20-mil floor district, which means when property values rise, our district automatically receives more funding and that's critical for a fast-growing district like ours. We're adding roughly 150 students each year. These dollars pay for our wonderful teachers, classrooms, buses, and other programs that keep our kids safe and supported. And without this growth, it's much harder to keep up with the needs of our children. Currently being debated in Columbus is House Bill 186 that limits how much additional revenue districts can receive from property value increases. Even if property values jump, Little Miami could only see increases at the rate of inflation versus the rate of our property tax increase unless we have more levies. So the automatic growth that helps us maintain quality schools would be cut significantly. Little Miami would feel that, one, because we're growing so fast. Every year, more students means more teachers, classrooms, buses, and all the costs that are associated with that. And House Bill 186 does not provide extra funding for that growth. And second, we just approved a renewal of our levy at 5.72 mils under House Bill 186. That levy would now be included in our 20-mil floor instead of sitting above it. So that money would be wrapped in, not in addition to what we would receive. So that could be millions of dollars in expected revenue that are now going to disappear and making it harder for us to serve our students. Some estimates have suggested that we could lose around $10 million over the next few years if this passes. And for a broader context, HB 186 is just one of multiple property tax reform bills being discussed at the state level. And on top of that, there's a petition circulating to abolish property taxes entirely. It's important we understand that these proposals could significantly reduce funding for our schools, especially those like Little Miami that are so fast-growing, without providing a clear alternative to pay for education. So this could affect class sizes being larger, programs being cut, and schools that are facing tough decisions sooner than expected. I know that a lot of people were really excited about lower taxes, better schools during the campaign season and I support lower taxes too, but lower taxes should not come at the expense of our schools. Policies up in Columbus like House Bill 186 or broader reforms that limit or abolish property taxes could make it harder to provide the quality education that our children deserve while forcing us to ask our voters for more levies sooner. I just encourage all of our board members to make their voices heard at the state level in any way possible so make sure that this doesn't happen. And I also, with any time left, I want to talk about last month when I said it's become so hard to care as a parent, to engage, to advocate, and to ask questions because of the environment we're in. My legal process has now been resolved, but the ripple effects remain. Parents and staff have told me off the record that they are afraid to speak up and some are staying silent because, or finding other ways to communicate because they feel unsafe and that's not okay for our community.
I know that tomorrow that there is, they are voting on that bill.
Adam Matthews, let him know.
All right, anybody else?
Positive.
All right.
I appreciate you.
Come on up.
I'll go make it quick.
All right.
You can put me on the timer. This is, I'm Ashley, hello. I have two children in Little Miami, both are in the gifted program, both in the middle school and much of this is in the words of my oldest daughter, so bear with me if the tenses change a little. She helped me write this, but we just wanted to advocate for some of our amazing teachers as we have had an amazing experience here in the gifted program. First and foremost, Mr. Barr. My daughter loves, love, loves Mr. Barr. Every time they see each other, it's like seeing a long-lost friend. She said Mr. Barr made learning fun, made her want to pay attention, because I think she might be ADHD like me, and want to do work even outside of school. She loved all the things that he taught her and really like brought into the classroom to make it fun. His honesty, his transparency in showing that he was human, especially sharing the loss and grief within his own family and how involved he was with the classroom. Next, she had Mrs. Copley. Because she's so passionate about teaching, she's so involved and she cares so much about us and our world, especially her passion for Green Club, which my daughter has been a member of two years in a row. Mrs. Copley just again makes it so much fun. Mr. Madden. Because she had, what was he, what did I write? My writing's messed up. Oh, Mr. Madden, because he would always share that he loved what he was teaching. He taught beyond the text, so really just beyond kind of what is on the paper. And she loved that he would open it up for dialogue. So they were able to not just listen, but he would challenge them to think more deeply. And he was just so invested in everything, even though, or she felt she was more invested, even though it was hard, just because he was so passionate about really creating a dialogue in the classroom. Last few, Mrs. Schrank. Mrs. Schrank has become my daughter's best friend. She always gives me great book suggestions and she can be stern when needed, when people are being disruptive, but she's still so kind. She always takes my suggestions for books and she gets to know me and has learned my name and she always saves some books for me on the side. Last two I have, Mrs. Heil. She was an amazing teacher who allowed us to have real debates and what she loved best is she would use this to help with in-class conflict. So she would let the group kind of help with any conflict or disagreements and she loved how they put that into practicality. And the last is Mrs. Hill, aka Miss Tina, from our daycare days. Miss Tina is an aide and has been an aide here for years, but because Miss Tina is so friendly in the hallways to all the students,